...review the procedures of the meeting. How's the acoustics tonight? I hope you can hear me. Yeah. No smoking is permitted in the building. Every effort will be made to give recognition to all who wish to speak. If anyone is having trouble getting my attention, please give your name on a note to one of the ballot clerks who see that I get it. When making a motion, please use the microphones. There's one here and there's one there. So that everyone may hear what you have to contribute to the discussion of an issue. I would especially ask that members of boards and committees do not use acronyms. It is unfair to assume that all in the audience know what they mean. When making a motion, please clearly state your name and street address. This is for the aid of the clerk, who has to keep the minutes, and of the moderator. Amendments to motions must be given to the moderator in writing. If you want to propose an amendment, you must have the amendment moved and seconded before you discuss it. It is contrary to the rules of procedure to discuss a motion before it is properly moved and seconded. The maker of a motion will be given the first opportunity to speak on it. No negative motions will be in order. All those who speak are to keep their remarks pertinent to the motion. No remarks that are personal attacks will be tolerated. No profanity will be permitted. Please direct your questions through the moderator. We will allow one follow-up question. We do not want to allow running discussions to go on. This is in the interest of time and fairness to others who may wish to speak on an issue. Please try to avoid redundancy. According to state law, town and school district meetings are run "by the moderator's rules." This means that the moderator sets the ground rules for the meeting. However, law also allows you to overrule the moderator's ruling by a simple majority vote. We will basically follow Robert's Rules of Order. Significant exceptions will be: A motion to adjourn or recess will not be accepted until all warrant articles have been put on the floor. A motion to table will not be in order unless it is to table to a specific time or place of order in this meeting. The purpose of this meeting is to have a majority of the voters who have taken the time and effort to attend express their will on a matter. Therefore, there will be no reconsidering a matter at a late hour after the supporters of a particular warrant have gone home. We will not require the maker of a motion to reconsider be a person who voted in the prevailing side the first time the item was put to a vote. The moderator will accept a motion to reconsider only when he is convinced it is a fair and valid order of business. The order of warrant articles is somewhat established by statute. Bond articles must be considered first, and the time available for voting on a bond issue must be at least one hour. Fortunately, we don't have any bond issues tonight. The last significant article we will consider is the budget for the coming year. Unfortunately, many people do not remain at the meeting until the budget is discussed. The moderator does not wish to discourage anyone from speaking on an issue. I just ask that you remember the passage of time before becoming redundant in the debate of an issue. Only those people who are on the checklist as qualified voters are permitted to vote at any time. If the moderator receives a complaint or notices a non-voter voting, he will require the non-voter to leave the hall. As you came into the meeting, the ballot clerks gave each registered voter a sheet of yes/no ballots. You also got a bonus tonight. There's another sheet with ballots for Articles 11 and 12. We have also arranged the halls so that the voters and non-voters are seated separately, non-voters being in the back corner. This procedure has been established so that we don't have to go through the checklist each time a secret ballot is called for. Saves a tremendous amount of time to do this. We ask that you please respect this system. The moderator must conduct a secret yes/no ballot when five voters make a written request prior to voice or division vote on an article. The moderator must take her secret yes/no ballot when seven or more voters challenge any non-ballot vote immediately after the vote is declared by the moderator and before any other business is begun. I would tell you I already have requests for secret ballots on Articles 1, 2, and 3. It is your prerogative for non-voters to speak at this meeting. It has been customary to allow employees, council, and non-registered residents to speak. If it is your wish to continue to do so, please signify by saying aye. Or, opposed, no. The ayes have it. At this time, I'd like to introduce the folks in the front of the room. On my right is the Board of Selectmen. Cecil Williams, Chair. M. Patricia Jewitt. John Lozaro. Tom LeBeck. And John Pinciero. And who else up here, Cecil, should we introduce? Yeah, Town Council, Jay Holt. And Heather Burns. And our dearly beloved person who keeps the selectmen in line in the office up there, going Cecile Derosier. Over here, we have our Town Clerk, Diane Jerry. And the Budget Committee. With William Spencer, Chairman. Ralph Mohan. David Micho. William Gray. Sue Ann Johnson. Charles Jones. Richard LaSalle's from the School Board. And Cecil Williams has been on the Budget Committee as a selectman. At this time, I'd like to announce the results of the elections held Tuesday. There were 4,017 registered voters at the start of the day. We had one added, so a total of 4,018 registered voters. We had 603 votes cast, including 18 absentee votes. The municipal offices elected, and I would ask those elected to come forward to be sworn in. For moderator, Philip Reed. For selectmen, for a three-year term, John Deveraux. Budget Committee, for a two-year term, David Micho and Cecil Williams. Trustee of Town Trust Funds, for a three-year term, Susan Rafferty. We had no on-the-ballot candidate for library trustee by write-in. The top write-in voters were Bonnie Delano with nine. She has declined. Tamara Law had six and was elected. Carrie Colby had six and declined. And Diane is still going through the list, trying to get somebody else that got votes to accept the position. Library trustee, a one-year term, Susan Rafferty. Road agent, one-year term, Roland Bergeron. Fire chief, one-year term, Brent Lemire. The warrant articles. Article 1 was defeated. Article 2 was passed, and Article 3 carried. And for the school district. Elected moderator for a one-year term, Philip Reed. School Board, two candidates, two for three-year terms, Cynthia Kulture and Donna Stray. School Board member, a one-year term, Lori Ordolano. School District Clerk, Diane Jerry. School District Treasurer, Joellen Bellarive. The charter commission ballot was defeated. 344 to 222. For those who were elected, please come forward for the administration of the oath. Diane, would you? Do you have to wait five days? I'm glad Diane is here. Because of the recount law, nobody's asked for one. But we have to wait five days to give anybody an opportunity to ask for a recount. So we can't do the swearing-in yet. But let's have a round of applause for those who were elected and assumed they were served. I don't know what I'd do without her to keep me on my toes. At this time, I'd like to recognize Chairman of the Board of Selectmen Cecil Williams for an announcement.
Good evening. Glad to see so many people here. It's nice to see that everybody's interested in what's happening in their town. Next year, I hope you start coming to the selectmen's meetings and the Budget Committee meetings, and enjoy yourself there, too. Now, the reason I asked for a couple of minutes is I want to recognize some people, very briefly, that have worked very hard in the town this past year. I'm gonna start out with one that has really had her hands full. She's had five people that she's had to keep in line, and she does a pretty good job of it. When those five people lose all their marbles and their figures and everything else, she's there to pull us back in. Cecile Derosier. Now, I want to recognize a couple of other people. Diane Jerry. She's a... She works for you people so much, you can't believe it. This lady sits down there, doesn't sit, she stands. She takes all your money, but let me tell you, it's a job keeping track of it, and she does an excellent job. She's been involved in extracurricular activities with committees. Diane, thank you very much. Let's have a round for her. Now, there's another lady I want you to recognize, too. That's Pat Jewitt. You know, Pat just keeps us all going. She's quite a lady, and for those of you that know Pat very well, I don't have to say anything. But for those of you that don't know Pat, you think she talks a lot? She does, but she does a lot, too. And I thank her. I want to thank and recognize, too, the Fire Department Chief, the Police Department, and the Highway Department. You know, we had a storm. We started out this last winter, and they really kept this town going. So I'd like a round of applause for those people. I want to thank all the volunteers of the committees. The jobs that they have done this year have been excellent. And I suppose for the next few years, they're gonna have their hands full. Remember, this town has very few paid people. We have a lot of volunteers, and they do a good job. Thank you very much. One other lady that I want to recognize, my wife, Constance.
Thank you, Cecil. This time, I'd like to recommend the Chairman of the Budget Committee, Bill Spencer, for kind of a preliminary overview. Bill?
Before I get into it, I think we ought to recognize Cecil Williams for everything he did for the town also. I'd like to cover two things before the meeting starts. One, what you're gonna be voting on tonight in the tax impact of those articles. And secondly, a little explanation on the first three warrant articles you'll be voting on, and what the implications are with those warrant articles. First, as far as the... Tax rate is concerned. The basic operating budget, which is Article 14, that's the last one you'll vote on, is worth about $2.95 per thousand on your tax rate. And as you go down through the warrant articles, the first one is a new town hall because that is expected to be funded by surplus funds. It has no impact on the tax rate. Article 2 is the police station piece of it, because part of that has to be funded by taxes. That has a 46 cent impact on the tax rate. Article 3 is funded by surplus, so that has no impact. And if Article 1 and 2 pass, then Article 3 is moot anyways. Article 4 is an assessment article. That's eight cents. Article 5 is computer equipment for the town clerk. That's worth four cents. The work at Brickyard to redo the soccer field is using reserve money, so that has no tax rate impact. The next two conservation articles, $5,000 apiece, they're worth a penny and a half, so I rounded. Article 9 was a handicap lift. That, I understand, has been withdrawn, so that obviously will not have an impact. Article 10 is the children's librarian. That's a penny on the tax rate in round numbers. And I'd also add that I understand there will be some amendments to the operating budget. When we get to that, that's the first one I talked about. And if those amendments pass, then you can expect to see some increases there, and we'll talk about those when the amendments come up. Last week, we had a table here. I gotta find it after I get through. Okay. We voted on the school budget last week, and the bottom line of that is the school budget is $20.98 estimated, an increase of 87 cents over today's tax rate. What I just went through with you on the town, if all those were approved, including the handicap lift, it would be $3.71, an increase of 70 cents. We don't have the accounting information yet, but typically it goes up eight or nine cents. So I just threw in nine cents, which would give you an overall increase if everything passed tonight, again, accepting the handicap lift for the moment, of $1.66. And everybody says, what's it on a $150,000 house? And so that'd be overall about $250 bucks. Okay? Now, you've got three warrant articles. Article 1, which is the new town hall. Article 2, which is the new police station. Article 3, which is renovation to the existing town hall. If we vote to pass Article 1 and vote to pass Article 2, then you will have the full build of the town hall and the police station up at Hillcrest, and the tax impact, the one-year tax impact of 46 cents. Article 3 would be withdrawn because it has no bearing. If Article 1, the town hall, were to pass, Article 2 were to fail, and Article 3, to renovate the town hall for the police station, were to pass, because of the use of surplus funds, it has no tax rate impact. If Article 1, the town hall, were to fail, Article 2 for the police station would have to be amended upward, because part of the cost includes the core and the site work in Article 1, so that would have to be amended upward. And if that passed, obviously Article 3 is inappropriate again, that gets withdrawn. I can't tell you what the tax impact would be. It may be nothing, it may be something. It would be dependent upon what the amendment would be if it comes to that. And lastly, if Article 1 fails and Article 2 fails, again, Article 3 is moot. No tax rate impact, but the town's in deep, serious trouble.
Before we get into the nitty-gritty, I want to recognize Selectman Tom LeBeck for a special announcement.
At this time, I'd like to call forward the following people. Fire Chief Brent Lemire. Deputy Chief Jim Beetz. Deputy Chief Brian Button. And firefighter Warren Adams. It's with distinct pleasure that I stand here this evening. During my tenure as fire chief myself in Litchfield from 1976 to 1984, I had a lot of very good fellows come forward for firefighting in the town of Litchfield. None any better than the four... Hopefully Warren will show up. None been any better than the four firefighters I've just named. To start out with, Chief Lemire, the first time I met Brent, him and a fellow by the name of Wayne Vesely, who was a Manchester firefighter, walked in to see about joining the fire department. And it was obvious from talking with Brent and with Wayne that their knowledge of firefighting, especially with Brent, his administrative ability plus his teaching ability, made him a great asset. He rose up very rapidly through the ranks and soon became my captain and my administrative assistant. Here, 20 years later, it is a great pleasure that I present the following award to Chief Lemire. It reads Brent Lemire, in recognition of 20 years dedicated service to the town of Litchfield, New Hampshire Fire Department, 1997. Deputy Jim Beetz. Not much can be added to what was said last year when Jim actually retired from the fire department. But Deputy Beetz has always been an asset to the department. We are very pleased to see him return to the department after a very short retirement. He's a very caring individual, well-respected, an authority figure by all the members of the fire department, local and surrounding departments. All the people who have served under him have greatly appreciated his way of handling any kind of situation that developed. Brent made a very good choice back in 1985 when he promoted Jimmy up to the Assistant Chief's position. Jimmy? Brian is a very dedicated individual, applying, joining the department. His ability to get things done was very apparent. Having served in the past department of the local truck garage, he just seemed to have his way around getting the parts we needed for the overall operation of the department, getting things to run properly with the aid of Deputy Chief, my former Deputy Chief, Skip Jerry. They were able to coordinate getting everything, keeping all the old apparatus we had in my tenure time, operating and running very efficiently. Brian? I guess Warren Adams, has he shown up yet? Loggus, we had Warren's little note that I wrote just, and we'll present this to him later, but just to share it with all of you. Warren Adams walked into the station about 20 years ago, looking to rejoin the department. He had grown up in Litchfield, and he had moved away when he got married, moved over to Merrimack. He had operated a garage in Asher at that time. He moved back to Litchfield in the form of operating a garage in town, but he was still residing in Merrimack. He came forward and asked if he could join the fire department where he would be available daytimes, which was really always been a major concern for everybody in the town of Litchfield as far as daytime protection. He then made himself available on the average of 10 to 12 hours a day for calls, and he became a very important part of the day-to-day operation of the department back then, much as he is today, because I'm sure our full-time firefighters look forward to him arriving, because sometimes he's the only one in town available. Thank you.
Now, I'm told I need to call on Pat Jewitt.
Now's my chance to talk. A proclamation of appreciation. Whereas Cecil Williams has retired from the Board of Selectmen after five years of service, we, as his former colleagues, thank him for his demonstrated devotion to duty. While carrying out his duties as selectman, Cecil Williams showed leadership as chairman of the board for two years, as liaison to the police department, as a representative to the Budget Committee, and as a welfare officer. The town's people and the Board of Selectmen greatly appreciate the time and the attention that Selectman Williams has given to making Litchfield a better place to live. We wish him success in his future endeavors. This is presented to him on the meeting of the 14th of March in 1997. The Board of Selectmen, John Lozaro, John Pinciero, Thomas LeBeck, and M. Pat Jewitt. They have this one?
Article 1, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $545,976 to construct and originally equip a new town hall with community core on town... Excuse me, on town-owned land on Hillcrest Road, and to authorize the use transfer of $516,198 of the December 31, 1996 fund balance for this purpose, and to further authorize the withdrawal of $24,120 in accrued interest from the Capital Reserve Fund, and $5,658 in accrued interest from the municipal impact fee. This will be a non-lapsing account per RSA 32:3, Roman numeral 6, and will not lapse until the work is completed or in two years, whichever is less. The Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend this appropriation. It will be by secret ballot. I recognize Cecil Williams for a motion. So moved. Do I have a second? Seconded by Tom LeBeck. Cecil, to speak on the motion.
Well, this is our third time up here. You know what that is. The town offices that we're presently in were opened up for business in 1973. And at that time, there were no full-time employees. There were four part-time employees. And of course, since that time, things have changed a bit. In 1980, the town's master plan suggested that the existing facilities would serve only adequately until the town reached 5,000 people. Well, we're at 6,700. So we're in a squeeze right now. The Municipal Space Needs Committee was formed three years ago. They came back with a proposal. They're gonna renovate the existing town hall. They're gonna use a building that sits in the back, do some work on that, and make a police station out of it. At a vote in 1965, that was rejected. There was a non-binding poll taken at that time. What did the people of the town want when it came to a town hall and police station? The vote came back quite unanimously that they wanted a full build up on the hill, on Hillcrest and the intersection of Albuquerque, town-owned land. If we were gonna do anything, that's what they were looking at. So the committee went back to work. They came up with a proposal last year, and that proposal, depending on which way you look at it, that was brought up as a bond issue. We missed the bond, which is a two-thirds majority, by less than 1 percent. 16 votes, we missed it. However, I think it's significant to look at the facts that the majority of the people, 62 percent, actually voted in favor... 62 percent, actually voted in favor of the town hall and the police station. Well, it didn't pass, so we came back again this year. The committee has done a lot of work. A lot of different ideas were passed through the committee, and I will say that people had a lot of thought. They've come back this year with a somewhat smaller proposal. Now, I realize, some people are saying, "Well, that proposal isn't totally adequate, but it is well-thought, well-put-together." Now, we've come to you to ask that you would vote for this proposal. The committee and the Board of Selectmen are in favor of a full build of this unit. Now, I'm going to throw out a cost here. A full build is $793,100. That's a full build. But we brought it to you in actually two different articles. There are three articles. One is contingent that something goes wrong, which we hope it won't. The two articles that we're going to discuss, and I am really discussing the first one, but it is—does heavily lay with the second one. We broke them down. The voters, the people that are paying for it, people that are paying for it, the owners, the opportunity to see exactly what was in the building, how it was constructed, and give you the opportunity of voting for whatever it is that you wish to have up there. We tried to do it in as clean a manner as possible. I'm talking about less confusing figures. Article is for the town hall and the community hall and the community corps. The total construction cost of that is $545,976. And that's less the $24,120 that we have in the Capital Reserve Fund, and less $5,658 that we have in impact fees. The balance is $516,198. That money is to be taken from the fund balance, and therefore, this first article, we're not coming to you for more taxes. Now, let's discuss a couple of things here. I know the people are going to say, "Where'd you get that $500,000?" The fund balance is money that, by the Department of Revenue, the town keeps. It's money that's left over from refunds, it's left over from unused taxes, unanticipated taxes, that come in during the year. Now, you all realize that when the tax is put together, it's an estimate, the best estimate that we can. And again, Cecile works on that, she grabs all these figures, puts them together, Diane helps her, the treasurer helps her, and that all goes together. If there's money left over, it goes into this reserve fund, and that can be used for various things. But generally, what I'm saying right now is you have a bank account there. You've saved this money, that's your money. Now, we've come to you to say, "We'd like to spend that money now. We'd like to spend it on the town hall." Now, as we get down into the next warrant article, there'll be some breakdowns. We'll get into other figures for you. But at this time, I'm going to turn it over to the Town Hall Police Station Committee Chairman, Tim Parker, and he's going to carry it from here. Tim?
Thank you, Cecil. I'd like to—the members of the committee. I was elected chairman for—Cecil Williams was the vice chair. Pat Jewitt, secretary. Diane Jerry, Cecile Derocher, Kevin Lynch, and Ron Oblinas. I'd also like to acknowledge the contributions made by Chris Blastos, Roland Bergeron, and Dave—and if I've left anybody out, I'm humbly sorry. I'm humbly sorry. Last year, we presented a proposal for a building very similar to what you see tonight. Sixty-two, as Cecil said, sixty-two percent of the voters at last year's meeting supported the proposal, but because the proposal called for a bond issue, 67 percent, or two-thirds, was required. This year, we have the three articles, as you mentioned. Building Committee strongly recommends the passage of Article one and Article two. Article three provides a temporary Band-Aid solution if one of the first two articles does not win your approval. At this time, I'd like to recognize Ron Oblinas for the committee's formal presentation.
Tim, thank you very much. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to present to you the recommendation of proposal for the town hall and police complex. The Space Needs Committee was formed back in 1994, and in fact, a result of the proposal by the Selectmen to initiate engineering of the town hall and complex. And I, along with others, stood up and said, "I don't think we should do that, because I don't consider that we are planned very well. I don't know how much research has gone into what we should be doing, what should be utilized from the existing town hall facility." And generally felt that there had to be a fair amount of home— I felt comfortable as a taxpayer within the town to agree that I would want anything to go forward. So obviously, when someone stands up and says something like that, you're probably the first one that is asked to participate. So obviously, that took place, and I was actually glad that I was able to participate on the Space Needs Committee and ultimately the Building Committee. I can stand up in front of you tonight and say that it's my personal opinion, and I'm quite sure I can speak for the remainder of the committee, that what we're presenting and recommending to you tonight, from my point of view and from the committee's point of view, is the best thing for the town, for the short term as well as long term. I can say that confidently to you. But that has come with a very large amount of discussion, research, planning, evaluation, and from 1994, you can imagine, there's been many, many hours. And I've struggled with trying to figure out how to present that to you in a very succinct manner and in clear manner, so I'm going to try to do that. But you're going to need to recognize, there's been a great deal of effort put into this, just give you an overview and follow along with you, and follow along pretty much as the handout you have in front of you, and go through the highlights of our research, development, and recommendation. Many things I'm going to just touch on very quickly, and I ask that, as you go through it, that you think of any questions, and I encourage you to ask questions. We have done that ourselves, and through asking questions, better understand, get a better sense of feeling comfortable with the recommendation that we're bringing to you tonight. Any recommendation needs to have some evaluation of why it's being done. So, as I said, it has convinced itself, we need to do something, but I need to do something, but I need to give you, the voters, a sense of what that is. We need to take back a step and say, "What is the need we're doing here?" Much has been talked about the actual recommendation, but let's talk about the needs and some of the evaluation. One of the things, obviously, we did is look at the existing town hall. We evaluated its present condition, we evaluated what it has within it as far as space, and how it's being utilized, how it could be utilized, and we found some things that really need improvements and needed to have corrected. One of the biggest things that currently is facing all towns and all public facilities, as well as in many private firms, is ADA requirements that is for handicapped accessibility. Obviously, a building built many years ago does not have this in mind, and certainly one of the things within the town hall is the difficulties of ADA. Accessibility on the two floors currently is via steps. Obviously, to get to the top floor, able to climb stairs is disabled, or is unable to use facility. That's one thing we had to consider, one thing that has to be considered in any planning. One of the other things that we ran into is the structural deficiencies within the building. The building was built many years ago, and was not designed to carry the loads that we imposed upon it in an office structure, and for any long-term use, we had an evaluation done prior to our work, and one done by Turner, as I noted, if it was ever any long-term use planned—for long-term use planned for the building, we would have to make structural modifications to the building. There is also, within the building, safety and security considerations. I think many of you are aware of some of the unfortunate incidents that occurred within the estate, of people coming in and causing harm to both the public people and the private citizens in the town halls. The security is something that we looked at and found that is lacking within the town, and something that we wanted to improve as we considered any plans for future expansions. Lastly, one of the things that is a very real concern in the present site is parking. As many of you experienced, if you tried to attend any functions within the town hall on some given nights, parking is an extreme premium. We have many competing functions within that space, fire, we have the church functions going on, that obviously, when those are going on, it becomes very crowded, but even within the town hall, just in the town hall, and the fire department, and the fire department some nights, parking becomes very, very difficult. So, on a long-term basis, that is one thing that we identified had to be addressed as well. The basic thing that we looked at was really related to the needs. Cecil mentioned that when the town hall was initially constructed, and as we started to move forward, there was part-time help. Right now, there is a number of full-time people within the building, and that is going to continue to increase. In addition to that, the building, as you also can imagine, has a very, very high use for volunteer meetings, help, Selectmen meetings, Planning Committee, a number of other functions within the building that are all competing for a very, very limited space. So one thing that we looked at is how is it functioning today, what do we need to provide for the future? And we were requested, as part of our vision, to look approximately forward at least twenty years and say, "What do we envision that if we spend our money, we can accommodate needs for a broader twenty-year or better plan?" So we're not looking at just satisfying the existing needs, we are looking at satisfying the future needs as well. So that has to be considered and evaluated when you consider what we're talking about tonight. So in summation, requirements for the future town hall and police station need to provide a safe facility for the public and for employees, needs to meet the short-term as well as long-term requirements, and certainly, one of the things that I was very sensitive to and am sensitive to is it needs to provide a cost-effective solution, and that is also in terms of short-term as well as long-term. And I think we can talk about that in more detail in a moment. That brings us to some of the considerations that we evaluated, and some of the things that we want to talk about tonight, as far as options considered, and how we came to recommending specifically building a combined police station and town hall at the Hillcrest site. Cecil mentioned that we looked at a lot of different things, and I don't have time to go through all the variations and all the summations for that, but let me just highlight some of the variations that we looked at. We did consider rehabilitating and expanding the existing town hall, and some of the strengths there is the physical plot plan of the existing town hall. As many of you know, it's bounded by a dwelling on the right-hand side, and toward the back of the property, it is not owned by the town, and even if we're able to purchase or acquire any property, there's wetlands consideration out there that will prevent expansion that would be needed to provide an adequate footprint of any added building space. So we determined that the expansion of the town hall site, trying to add on to the building, was, for a number of reasons, not a very real and viable alternative. Could we use the existing town hall, and could we—hall, and could we build one facility, new facility somewhere else to house either police or the town? The difficulty we ran into—the difficulty we ran into there is now, we have two facilities that we have to maintain. We still have a very substantive improvement necessary to the town hall, we still have all the issues of ADA that I just talked about, structural deficiencies that have to be taken care of, and should we keep it as a town hall, we still have a very difficult issue with the parking. Also, one of the things that we considered is if we split up the functions of town hall and police station, we eliminate one of the positive things we do enjoy today, and that is having the police station within the same building as the town hall. That does benefits the public as well as employees within the building, and gives at least some very substantive amount of security benefits. So when we split—if we consider splitting them up, that's one thing that we would lose, which I think is a very significant thing to consider as well. Finally, the last thing that we began to focus on and really concluded that, for the long-term, alternative for the town is to construct a combined new building for the town hall and police station. I trust many of you also gathered the handout that was available at the desk and shows the layout of the building. I'd like to move to that just for a moment, and— Just talk to that in a minute. I'm not going to go through details of that. Again, this is something we can talk about if there's any specific questions, but I just want to highlight some of the major features within the layout, and talk a minute about how the general concept of the design was developed. As you can see, that the layout is really focused around a center core, and— And that is really designed, a common entry area. It provided a couple of different things for us as well. I mentioned an issue. As you can see, that by having a central entrance, a single entrance, we were able to provide security to the building, a controlled access to the building. It provides a common area which people will come in and be handled by the town clerk directly. There would be not any access required into the other parts of the building, and that can provide security for employees within the town hall side. The common core area also has a large meeting room, and this can be used for public hearing sessions, can be used for overflow, as you all attend the Selectmen meeting that Cecil will encourage you to do, and provides an area for specific town hall business that we don't have now. Let's just give you an overview of how big the building is. As you can see, there's some rough dimensions on there. If you add up the figures on the top, the length of the building is approximately 130 feet long. To give you some sense of how long that is, this gym is approximately 90 feet long, so the building would be a little slightly longer than the length of the gym here. The width of it is approximately—from my pacing off—the width of the hall here is about 75. So the building would be about two-thirds as wide as this gym. So we're not talking about a huge—a relatively large structure compared to what we have today. Square footage is currently in the town hall, we only have about 2,000 square feet, including— Square footage is currently in the town hall, we only have about 2,000 square feet, including the cellar where the police is located and the top two floors. So you can see that we do expand, but it is not an ambitious building by any stretch of imagination. I think it's very reasonable and is a good compromise in size. The things that the layout does provide is for phased construction. We were asked by a number of people as we were planning to be able to bring to the town alternatives as we have tonight, essentially build something in a phased manner. The core allows us to do that and that is why we can bring to you two separate warrant articles that would represent building a town hall facility and/or a police facility and then adding something on later. We did that and we have been able to do that and the design accommodated that. Also, the design, as you can see, is on a single level and very easily takes care of the ADA issues that the town hall currently is deficient in. At the bottom of the handout sheet that I'm going over, the outline, you see the estimates for cost. Cecil made mention of those quickly and I wanted to spend a few moments and go over those with you and give you some sense of what those are. There's a fair amount of numbers down there and if you're not familiar with them, you can easily get confused as to what they are. Let me spend a moment and try to give you some insight into what those are. Let me start on the right-hand side of the matrix. You see under the label of 1997 proposal, under the column of total, you see the figures that you in the article, under the total, under the total cost, this represents the combined Article I and Article II for the police station. The total cost to build the facility is $793,100. The Article I and II is simply the breakdown between that figure should we, as we vote on it individually. Article I, the town hall center core, so that's why core, so that's why it's significantly higher than Article II. It's significant to note that neither one of the police nor the town hall can be built without the center core. So it's important, obviously, that anything went forward, that the town core goes with it. And that's the large difference between, as you can see, the space between the two, see the space between the two functions, town and police are approximately the same On the left-hand side of that matrix is 1996 proposal. Let me just spend a minute giving you some information on that. In the very first column under 1996, the total cost is $767,700. That essentially represents what we brought to the town last year. One of the significant things that is not on this year's proposal that was on last year was on the police facility side, there was two holding cells and a Sally Port included in the proposal. This year, in response to many of the questionnaires that were filled out, the issue of holding cells seemed to be on many people's mind and there was some thought, could that be delayed? The building committee decided that anything could be delayed and reduce the price by any significant amount of money, it was that particular function. I'm not going to speak too much about that because obviously Article II deals with the police station and I wish to have that discussion as to why we eliminated that and potential discussion on including that reserved for a particular discussion of Article II. But just to put things in comparison, if you go over one column under 1996, the figure to build the exact thing that was presented at the town meeting last year, which included the Sally Port and two holding cells, would now cost $853,122. Now, obviously, that's a significant jump and I'll just spend a few moments commenting on that and if we have particular questions later on, we can answer that. Essentially what that represents is very, very substantive increases in both labor and materials over last year. So for instance, lumber prices have increased approximately 20% over last year. And the amount of building going on has reduced the amount of available subcontractors willing to bid and be available for construction of any building, including ours. So the simple fact of supply and demand has increased the cost of the building significantly from last year. But should we wish to bring forth and have built exactly the same thing as proposed last year, that is the cost that we would need to provide for tonight, $853,122. What I want to move on to next is some of the discussion on how would we plan to build this and what are some of the steps we've taken that should you approve tonight, what are we going to do? How are we going to get this built? As part of our evaluation, one of the things that we considered is what is the best way to have it built, have it managed as we go out to construction? What we did, working with our architect from Turner Group, it was decided that we would use a method of construction management which is relatively new, but one that many people are using, in fact, was proposed in the past as part of the school edition. And that is use of a construction management firm. What that is, is a firm which is very similar to the general contractor that many of us are familiar with and we're using them in a somewhat different role. Essentially what we do is we acquire a general contractor upfront and based on a, he develops a price and guarantees to us what that price will be. Through a selection process with the, and our architect, and our architect and approved by the selectmen, we selected Milestone Corporation as our general construction management firm. We then worked with them to develop the maximum price, the guaranteed price, not exceed price that you see represented primarily in the figures under the 1997 proposal, as you can see under the total construction. That figure of $655,400 represents what Milestone will be building for us and that includes the building and the site work. And then obviously, there's other associated things that need to be accommodated to complete the building, including furnishings, engineering, and a small contingency. Now, what is the significance of that particular methodology for the town? For me, it's very significant because I can bring to you tonight this figure and tell you that we will not be back for you for any more money. The figure that is here is guaranteed by Milestone and they will, they agree, subject to your approval tonight, to enter in a contract with us for that amount of money. As we go forward, they will act as the general contractor. We will not go out for bid as many of the towns have had to do. They pass a proposal, then go out to bid and get shocked when the bids come in, particularly in an environment we're in now, which competition is very fierce for trying to get contractors to do work for us and bids come in high simply because there's so much work, people bid high. We will not have to come back to you and request more money because we are not going to go through that process. The process that will be utilized here is as we move forward with construction, Milestone will be gathering bids for the particular subtype work to complete the building. Traditionally, those are things like electrical, mechanical, plumbing. They will be responsible for obtaining the bids for those. We will review those bids and if any of those bids come in lower than the estimated amount within the price that was generated to come up with the guaranteed price, the town will recognize all those savings. So I can tell you that we will not exceed this figure and if things go well, we may actually spend less than this amount of money that you see here. So finally, I think that represents also a very positive thing for the town and how we can move forward with this. I want to just simply finish up by saying that the building committee was recommending the combined town hall and police station. We think it's the best long-term solution. We think it's the most cost-effective and we hope that we can answer any questions and that you feel comfortable in the course we brought.
Before we go forward, it's abundantly clear to me that whether you're pro or con, it's obviously the committee has done a lot of work. And I think before we go forward, they deserve a round of applause for the work that they have done. Further discussion on Article I. Hearing none? You're prepared for a vote? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes, please come forward.
First, I do appreciate the work that was done. I can tell a lot was done, but I'm a little bit disappointed that it appears we have all the information to either vote for Article I or vote for Article II. No, what am I trying to say? I'm trying to say we have no information if we want to vote down Article I on how much a police station will cost, whether surplus funds can be put towards a police station. We don't have the figures. Is anyone here prepared to give us figures if Article I does fail?
Anybody understand or want to answer the question?
If Article I is voted down and we're going to vote on Article II, how can we vote on something not knowing how much it will cost, whether or not the surplus monies can be put towards it on the police station?
I think that is, that's why the articles are in in the order they are, in in the order they are. Because Article I being the preeminent thing, you want to speak to that?
But it looks like we can either have a town hall or a town hall and police station.
Let me just speak to that very quickly. The reason that the committee split it up the way they did is that should the town wish to do a phased construction, it is our recommendation that the town hall move first and that the police station stay and use the existing town hall. It's very difficult to reverse that. We don't recommend even a police, if any function had to stay within the town hall, within the town hall, the best one to accommodate the existing town hall with renovations that were required in Article III, modifications of the building, would be the police station. So we did not present to you the other option of moving the police with the town, with its core and leaving town hall there. So that's why it's put together the way it is. Does that make any sense or does that answer your question?
It makes sense, but like a choice has been taken away from us. I mean, other towns built police stations. Why don't we have that choice?
Because you could do that, but we need to get into a very, you know, we need to get into discussion as to the ramifications of moving the police up there and keeping the town there. One of the very substantive things is we still have many issues to deal with ADA. On the police side, we can probably struggle along with some of those issues much easier than we can than if the town hall facility stayed there.
Mr. Spencer, he was there first. Or you yield to him.
I want to follow up on your question, your question. The budget committee was largely responsible for splitting the one articles and the reason for that and the reason we'd like to see the town hall first is because if the town hall does get approved, then you have a second option for the police station, which is to renovate the town hall. If you went the reverse and went with the police station first, you really don't have an option in the town hall. You know, they're stuck there and you're going to have a lot of problems. So logically, you go town hall first, then you have two options for the police. I think the question though was if the town hall fails, you will have to amend Article II. And I think she was asking what that would be amended to and would that be covered by what monies you've allocated for surplus?
Yes, sir.
Alarachi, 16 Birch Street. We certainly appreciate the level of commitment from the committees in researching the potential plans to implement the new town hall and the new police station. A couple of questions come to mind with this better than half a million dollar surplus that the town is now faced with. Am I to understand correctly that it's more like $600,000 with the inclusion of the $85,000 for the surplus? For the surplus? So the surplus is actually 600,000 plus or minus a few thousand? A little bit?
Yeah.
Are you 601 on the total? Does this radically deplete the surplus fund? Then there's additional surplus funds to cover any additional amendments to this evening's articles as alluded by Mr. Spencer there? We have some amendments coming up later on that are not reflected in what's being shown right now to us?
There are additional funds, but it isn't, we're not looking to deplete that fund. We cannot deplete the fund. The DRA, Department of Revenue Administration for the state, recommends that you have a fund and they'll give you, every once in a while, they'll give you a recommendation what you should have. It's not, okay. This one, their recommendation is 480 to 950,000 dollars that you have in the fund. Now that's not, you don't have to have it there, but that's their recommendation.
Then again, the question, sir, is as we move through these articles this evening, it's already been stated that we're looking at additional amendments to this evening's budget. Is there enough reserves left after the $600,000 depletion to cover some of the potential amendments to this evening's budget?
No.
So as we vote through these articles right now, early on, we have no recourse to the this evening's amendments to the original budgets that are shown to us.
Well, you can amend it, but that means that we'll have to raise the tax within this year.
Well, that's kind of a given, right? If we vote more money?
Sir, you had your follow-up. You're doing a running conversation. His answer is, no, you can't get into reserves. If you make amendments, it'll be addition to taxes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name is Mark Charbonneau, 5 Laurel Street. I'd like to move the question.
Question has been called. Calling of the question is a vote to end debate. All those in favor of ending debate, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
The ayes have it, debate is ended. We will now vote on the main motion.
Mr. Reed?
The debate on the motion is ended, sir.
I didn't have a chance to speak.
The debate on the motion, calling the question.
I had my hand, I had my hand up in the back and I think it's my democratic process to say something on this article.
The motion has been made and passed to end debate. Debate is ended.
This is very important and I have something to say to address the town, if I may. Please, what is five, what is two more minutes? Could I please be recognized?
What is the wish of the House? What is the wish of the House?
I had, I had my hand in the bleacher in the back and came down.
I can't see you back there. If you come out forward, I can see you.
It's no big deal. I just have something to say on this article.
Just one minute. All those in favor of reopening debate, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
You have the floor, Larry.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. My name's Lawrence Quigley of one thirty-eight Charles Bancroft Highway. What I understand is that with this new complex, if we, if there was an amendment of $25,000, we can have a Sally Port and an extra police cell. Is that correct?
That would come up under Article Two.
Two police cells and a Sally Port. I say the town should go for it. It's about time we had a station.
Sir, your discussion is relative to Article, is relative to Article Two, which will be very appropriate when we get to Article Two, which is the construction of the police station.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm all for Article Two with the $25,000 amendment.
Further discussion on Article One.
Tim Lozo, four Windsor Drive. Correct me if I'm wrong, but carry on that last gentleman's conversation. I thought the surplus capital was in the reserves for essential or emergency needs. Now, if an emergency should arise and we spend this money by voting it in tonight, what's the town going to do?
Cecil? Turn around. That's why we're not going to deplete that fund. There will be money there.
Do you have a number?
$230,000.
But the state recommends between 500 and 900,000?
The, the state recommends anywhere between 450 and nine-something.
So we're going against the state's recommendations?
We have never, ever had what the state recommended. It was this year, last year we got close to it, this year we have gotten there.
Wouldn't you think the monies would be more appropriately used than maybe a school?
We are a separate entity from the school.
Thank you.
Mr. Martin?
Kevin. Hurry up.
Just to follow up on, on the last question, there's unusual expenses, unusual expenses if they might come in, and that's also to cover, you know, obligations of the school district if they have problems. In addition to that, there's another set of money to set aside, okay, which you don't, we haven't talked about. It's called an overlay. It's $150,000, and that's, that's to cover possible court settlements, tax assessment, whatever. So it's, it's enough money between the overlay and the overlay and the reserve fund so that we should be okay. But I agree with the selectmen. You really don't want to dip into it any further than it's been dipped into.
Mr. Lynch?
I'd like to move the question, please.
Question has been called. All those in favor of ending debate, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We will vote on Article One. Article One to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 545,976 dollars and so forth. Please vote by ballot number sixteen. Please mark your ballot, yes or no. Fold it. Do not tear the ballot, the, the little section of ballot itself. Just tear off sixteen. Mark it yes or no, and will my ballot collectors please come forward and do your duty? I, I think I neglected to announce earlier that our refreshments this evening are being Ladies and gentlemen, please resume your seats. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to announce the results of Article One. Aside from raising 25 cents for the fund, Article One passed with 225, 225 yes and 87 no. Article Two, to see if the town will the sum of 247,107,124 dollars to construct and originally equip a new police station on town-owned land on Hillcrest Road and to authorize the use transfer of 85,658 dollars of the December 31, 1996 fund balance for this purpose, with the balance of 161,466 dollars to be raised by taxation. This will be a non-lapsing account per RSA 32 colon three, Roman numeral six, and will not lapse until the work is completed or in two years, whichever is less. The article is recommended by both the selectmen and the Budget Committee. I do have a proper request for a secret ballot, and I recognize Selectman Cecil Williams for a motion. Motion made and seconded. Selectman Williams to speak to the motion.
Well, people, we're halfway there. Now, you don't have to raise your hands, you don't have to nod. As a visitor or a prisoner, how many people have been in the police department? Well, I said this at the budget hearing, and I'm going to say it again. I'm embarrassed to even take a prisoner down in our police station. We need a police, and we need it in the worst way. What the committee has come up with, again, people have said, well, we, we, we should do it this way, we should do it that way. I think the proposal is good. Let's talk about the money. Under warrant, Article Number Two, the total construction cost for that article is 247,124 dollars. We're going to take 85,658 dollars from the fund balance. That leaves a balance of 161,468 dollars. What that means to you and your pocketbook is, it's going to cost you 47 cents per 1,000 dollars of assessed evaluation. The bottom line for one year to put in this police station is going to cost you 70 dollars and 50 cents. People, that's a bargain. Thank you.
Do I have further discussion on Article Two? Yes, sir.
Mike Pushtree, I move to amend Article Two, to amend Article Two, to raise the amount of 60,000 dollars to include a single Sally Port and two cells.
Do I have a second to the amendment?
Yes.
Yes, you may speak to the amendment.
As long as we're going this far with building the police station, we might as well provide our police officers with the facilities they need to do their job properly.
Before we go any further on the language of the amendment, and I'm going to extend, and I'm going to extend the amendment to amend Article Two to increase the amount by 60,000 dollars to 307,124 dollars to include single Sally Port and two holding cells, and that additional 60,000 would be added to the 161,000 to be raised by taxes. Is that the correct intent of the motion? Maker of the motion? Thank you. Larry?
I agree 100 percent, and it's about time this police department has a, a functional headquarters. What good is something that's dysfunctional? If they need a Sally Port and they need the extra cells, then the police department deserves it. It's about time. This is a good article.
Further discussion on the amendment. Further discussion on the amendment.
What's the Budget Committee's feelings on the amendment? How does the Budget Committee assess this amendment?
Anybody in the Budget Committee to speak to that? I think it's coming up behind you.
The Budget Committee voted in, Committee voted in favor of Article One and Article Two to present it to the town, for you to vote on. There was no discussion as far as Sally Ports and cells and what we voted on, so we didn't take a vote, and that's all I can tell you.
You have a follow-up question?
So according to the Budget Committee and to the town, there's been no assessment from the police department as to the necessity of this additional 60,000 dollars to it?
Sorry, I didn't understand the question.
Where is the validation and the necessity of this coming in at the 11th hour? That cognizance of this, or the town is incognizance of this? Incognizance of this?
Hold on one second. Chief Roberts?
Thank you. If I may, address your question first. This has been an ongoing dialogue, right from day one.
With who, sir?
With the study committees, with every committee that is, with every committee that has been appointed and have been put through.
With the exception of the Budget Committee.
Right. The, the thing being, Mr. Raggio, if I may, the cells, the Sally Ports were presented last year.
Yes, sir, I'm fully aware of that, yeah.
And as many have attested to, it seems to be an issue with several of the people out here. When the Building Committee went back, which I was an active part of at that time, went back in 1996 and 97, that was something that was debated very heavily, okay? I've always maintained, and after I answer your question, I will go on further, I always maintain that you need your cells and your Sally Ports. To build something in a police department without all the tools to do the job is irresponsible.
Well, that's, that wasn't the issue, sir. I, I fully understand the necessity for it. The question was stated, why wasn't the Budget Committee cognizant of this addition?
The Budget Committee reviews and recommends what is presented to us by the selectmen. So what they present is what we reviewed, pure and simple.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yes.
I would just like to continue the, ladies and gentlemen, I don't, by the looks of the hands that were, that Mr. Williams asked for, there aren't very many of you that have been into a police station, okay? And I applaud you for that, okay? Unfortunately, not everybody can say that. We do have people in society that don't always abide by the rules and regulations. That's why we're here. If everybody abided, we wouldn't be standing here, I wouldn't be here, we'd all be on our merry way. We have to deal with those people. Cells and Sally Ports are a necessity to deal with these people. It's like a fire truck. How many fire trucks do you see without a hose on it? What would our roads look like tonight if we had plows out there without the plows on them or the sanders? You don't do it that way. You look at the overall problem and you deal with it. The overall problem is to build yourself a police station. A police station has Sally Ports, it has holding cells, in which to hold the people that we're dealing with. Even Mayberry RFD had two cells.
Further discussion on the amendment.
Don Farren, 301 Charles Bancroft Highway. I'm sure that I'm one of the heavy taxpayers in Litchfield, okay? I completely endorse going the full shot. Vote the amendment and then go for the police station on Article Two.
Further discussion on the amendment. Hearing none, I presume you're ready to vote on the amendment to amend Article Two to raise the total sum to 307,124 dollars, which is an increase of 60,000 dollars, which will be added on to the amount to be raised by taxation. All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
The ayes have it, the amendment passes. Article Two now is for 307,124 dollars. Further discussion on Article Two.
Bill Spence on nine Cranberry Lane, and I'd like to use the overhead.
Yeah.
I'm going to do some reading, if you don't mind, but given that you had about a two-hour presentation already, I'll try and be short. Let me tell you, first of all, I was a member of the original Study Committee, okay? It looked at the, the space needs, okay? And we did recommend that a new town hall be built and the existing town hall be used, reused as a police station. That was back in 1995. Since then, I've stayed in touch with what's been going on with the Building Committee, both as part of the Budget Committee and on a personal basis. There's no doubt in my mind, okay, that the police should not remain where they are in the basement of the town hall, but I personally think that the proposed new building is premature, and I'll try to tell you why, in light of today's current needs by the police department. The present force consists of two supervisors who work separate shifts, okay, a detective, five officers, and one secretary dispatcher, a total of nine full-time officers. At the January 28, 1997 review of the Budget Committee, it was stated that the actual occupancy of the station during the day is no more than four or five people, okay? I also point out the station is closed from 7:00 a.m., excuse me, is open from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., those evenings and weekends, and weekends. Right now, that building is occupied by anywhere from 10 to 12 people, okay? Given our current tax situation, I personally think it's unlikely that police force will increase by more than a couple, a couple of police officers in the next 10 years. Article Two was designed for future force of approximately 20 officers, okay? That significantly lies in what we're going to have in the next 10 years. I agree, I agree with Chief Roberts. He's been very consistent in terms of his needs for the retention cells, and I will These are from the Minutes of the Space Needs Committee, in particularly the January 3, 1995, 5-1, where he agreed that the lack of retention cells is not as much of a problem today as it would be in the next 10 to 15-year period, and therefore should be taken into account in any long-term plan, and I agree, it belongs in any long-term plan. Mr. Obelinas summed up his understanding of the issue as follows. Given today's set of circumstances, retention cells are not needed, but your desire and recommendation is that it be included in any long-term construction plans- But your desire and recommendation is that it be included in any long-term construction plans because of concerns of changed situations between now and then. Is that a fair summation? Chief Roberts responded that for the long term, that's a fair summation. Okay. We've got two options facing us. Build new based upon needs of at least 10 years or so more in the future as Article Two proposes, or reuse the existing building to meet our current needs for the foreseeable future. I just want to show you the space that's being provided in the proposed new building and the space that's available in the town hall. Yes, I can. Sir, I'm going to show you exactly. I'm not speaking to Article Three. The point is that everything that is being provided in the new police station can be provided very easily in the existing building at low cost. And I think that's an issue you ought to know about. If you're going to vote on Article Two, you've got to know what the option is. If you're going to vote on Article Two, you've got to know what your option is.
I have a point of order. And I'm going to rule in favor of the call of a point of order that discussion of what to do with the old town hall is relative to Article Three.
If you want to vote that way, you can. But what I will tell you is that you're being hoodwinked. Because everything that's being provided in the new building can be provided for the next 10 to 15 years in the existing one for a lot less cost than proposed in Article Three. And if you don't want to hear about that, that's fine. But if you vote for Article Two, you're missing an opportunity.
Do I have further discussion on Article Two as amended?
Steve Harris, Pinecrest Road. I want to, and I'll show you how you do it, a motion to overrule the moderator.
I'm sorry?
A motion to overrule you on your point of order. I think a lot of people want to hear the discussion that Bill wants to put forward.
Fine. I have a motion to overrule the moderator's point of order. Second motion. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye!
Those opposed, no? The ayes have it. Ayes have it. I would just... I will share with you a little story. I went to a moderator's workshop that was put on by the State Municipal Association. And one of the... was former Governor Peterson, who is the moderator of the Peterborough School District. And he pointed out in the workshop that he chaired a Constitutional Convention of the state. He chaired one of the two... he was the leader of one of the two houses of the legislature. And he was governor. And he never got overruled until he became a moderator. Yes, Bill, go ahead. You appear. I yield to Bill.
You notice he kept the mic, though. Okay. The second floor of the town hall has three basic offices today. Okay? They're perfectly adequate for the administrative space that was proposed, for the chief's office, the lieutenant's office, the detective sergeant's office, for the officers that do their paperwork. Once the selectmen's office moves out, once the building agent moves out, those heavy files move out, a lot of the issues associated with the structural loading on the second floor disappear. There's no question, you'd have to spend some money for security doors up there. No question about that. Some petition work. But that would be minor cost. Would be minor cost. And you'll notice that the complex provides 496 square feet for that and the second floor has 692 square feet of available space. The first floor would be the public area. That's where the booking and holding would take place. That's where the dispatcher receptionists would take place and the armory could go there. Those requirements in the new building, amount to 565 square feet. There's 585 square feet on the first floor. Clearly, you'd need handicapped access there. That would be a public access there. That would be a public access area. And you'd need to improve the security there, both doors and windows. The basement, which also has multiple offices, could be used for the storage. The new complex provides a male locker room, a female locker room. You have 347 square feet in total between them. Some total of 491 square feet, that'd be five. And if you needed a squad room, that could go there also. You notice I have zero and zero on cells and Sallyports. It is clear that if you want cells and Sallyports, you don't want to stay in the town hall. It's also clear to me that that need for the full cells and Sallyports is 10 to 15 years away. Okay. Cost for the reuse, I say is probably less than $50,000. And there's little work required in the basement. There's little work required on the second floor. The major work is on the first floor. So, why is Article Three $109,000? I'll tell you why. Because it was done for a different purpose. It wasn't designed to figure out what the cost would be to put the police there. What's in that number? $9,000 for new side entrance. Do you need that? No, you don't. $5,000 for vapor barrier. Do you need that? No, you don't. $5,000 to replace the handicap ramp. Do you need that? No, you don't. $6,000 to paint the building. If you're going to keep the building, you've got to paint it anyways. Okay? $9,000 for structure work on the second floor, that's questionable. $25,000 to replace the heating system. You're going from 12 people to four people and you've got to replace the heating system. $7,400 for plumbing up the heat? No. Engineering? Engineering, maybe. Continency, maybe. Demolition, sure. You'd have some of that. Probably some foundation repairs, some exterior repairs, maybe some structural work and security file out. But certainly not $109,000. So, my recommendation is a vote against Article One. Article Three... Excuse me, Article Two. I'll get it straight. Here's why. All the police space needs that's proposed up in the complex can be met in the current building at a minimum cost. Okay? Remembering that you're going from 10 to 12 people in the existing building to four to five in the new building. Okay? When a new station is really needed, it'll be better defined. We funded a build-out study to look at how the town of Litchfield was going to grow. So, we know what's going to happen there. We'll have a better idea where it's going. When that's completed, need for retention cells will be much clearer. And in 10 to 12 years, who knows what the police needs are going to be? I think it's a better use of tax dollars. One, you don't have to raise any taxes to do that. It's funded by the reserves. Okay? Secondly, those monies could be used for other identified items. Now, I had Article Nine, the handicapped lift, that's being withdrawn. But I guarantee you, that'll be back next year. Roadwork. We've got roads in this town that are falling apart. If you've ever gone out on Nissenkegg or Jeff Lane, parts of Albuquerque, they're falling apart. There's no money in this year's budget for that. Wasn't put in there because of the complex. You've got Albuquerque itself. Someday, that's going to be built. If I was living in Meadowbrook, I'd be here with an article before you're saying, "Please build it for me." Okay? Next year's school taxes. Next year, you're going to have the full impact of the school addition. Okay? That's going to be a couple hundred thousand dollars that you're going to have to pay for each year. Surplus funds go to reduce taxes. They can go to reduce that tax impact. And lastly, it could be used for this year's taxes if you so chose. So, there are other uses. There are other priorities in this town. You have a clear option. It would allow the police to have a quite workable arrangement in the existing town hall without building new and using that money for other things. Thank you.
Don Farren again, 301 Charles Bancroft Highway. I hate to disagree with the chairman of the Budget Committee. But we've already heard tonight that the costs of building materials and so forth are going to go up, up, up. We ought to go ahead with the police station right now while the costs are somewhat near reasonable. 10 years from now, it'll probably be double. If this town had to build a town hall up there three years ago or four years ago, it would have cost a lot less than it's going to cost us right now. So, let's go with the total thing. You've had a lot of time there. Sit down.
Ray Peoples, 205 Charles Bancroft Highway. I think one of the issues that everybody in this room has forgotten tonight is the town employees. Our town employees are basically made up of females. They have the benefit of the protection of the police department being in the same building as them. Diane Jerry, our town clerk, handles a substantial amount of funds. I would charge this town that the only reason she hasn't got robbed to date is because she has the police force sitting in the basement. We're looking at escalating costs on all fronts. I think with today's electrical rates, the utility costs, that by building the town hall with the police station and Sallyports in its entirety would be a prudent decision for this town. We're going to build a building that's going to be well insulated. It's going to be well-maintained far as heating. We're not going to have the expensive electric heat that we have the town hall. There's a number of advantages. If we split these two things up, if we put them in two places, we're going to have two sets of bills. We're going to have a set of phone bills for each building. We're going to have utility bills for each building. We're going to have maintenance costs for each building. I think if we keep these things combined together, there's some economy of scale. By building them today, they're out of our hair for the next 20 years and we're not going to be continuously faced, year after year, with adding space of some form or another. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Tim Kearns, Number One Brickyard Drive. I've done some work in the police station. I installed a communication system in there. I was really shocked the day that I was running the wires over upstairs to Rowland's office. I pushed up one of the ceiling tiles. And I don't know, you guys can't see this, but this is a piece of bark. The building is constructed by taking trees, cutting the tops off in half, and that's what's used for timber. As soon as you lift up those ceiling tiles, you're faced with half-trees notched into wood across the top, both lengthwise and vertically. To put any money into that for a police station, to me, is silly. We can write it off as a historical building, I think, but to put any money as a waste into that building. They need a concrete building with cells and Sallyports to do their job. And we're going to be facing a high school soon. And I think in 10 years, we're going to be looking at hiring more officers, again, hiring more officers, more than building a building. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Maria Dutton, 9 Woodhawk Way. I'd like to ask Mr. Spencer if he was speaking on behalf of the Budget Committee or just as a private resident. Because according to this, Article Two was recommended by the Budget Committee. And he just stood up there and talked us out of it.
The Budget Committee recommended Article Two. Mr. Spencer was speaking on his own.
I wish I had thought to bring overheads. I'd also like to ask why the building was structurally unfit for the town hall, but it's okay for a police station.
I think it's a rhetorical question. Yes, go ahead.
Steve Harris, Pinecrest Road. And for this speech, I'm a part-time police officer in this town. I speak for this amendment. The building is 150 years old. And, or more than that, right? Which means it was built before Abraham Lincoln was president. I think we've gotten our money's usage out of it. It's amazing to me to even discuss that. The second point on the Sallyports. When you arrest an individual, they're usually not too happy. I don't know why. We try to make it a pleasant experience. They're just not happy. We have no place to secure those people. It's not just a matter of protecting them, it's protecting the town from civil liability or what have you. You have a person that's handcuffed. You have no place to secure them. They can fall. They can get hurt. The Sallyports have nothing to do with whether or not there's 1,000 people in the town or 5,000 people in the town. They just make good sense. And as far as the cost, if you amortize this over 10 years, what are we talking about? Less than this water cost me next door? Thank you.
John Pinciero, 10 Broadview Drive. I'd like to call a question, please.
Question has been called. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye!
As opposed, no?
No!
The ayes have it. The question has been called. We will now vote on Article Two as amended. As amended, it is to raise $307,124 and the additional $60,000 to be raised by taxation. I would ask that you use ballot number 15. And please be sure to use ballot number 15. We had a couple of errors on the first ballot. And I ask that you remain seated because we can move on to other articles than Article Three while we're waiting for the count on this. So, if the ballot collectors would please pick up the ballots. Using ballot number 15, please mark it yes or no. And if the ballot collectors would please pass the alms box. While we're doing that, I'm going to move to Article Four to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum $29,500 for Phase One of a four-year town-wide assessment update plan. The entire cost of the assessment update over the four-year phasing will be $131,300. The selectmen and Budget Committee. I recognize selectmen Leveque for a motion. Do I have a second? Motion made and seconded. Tom Leveque to speak to the motion.
This Warren article has been brought forward after many requests for abatements of their taxes. We felt it was properly timed to bring this forward to the citizens of the town to see if they wanted to reevaluate the town. If we went ahead and had it done all in one shot, it would be $160,000. We did not want to spend that kind of money. So, we negotiated with the appraisal firm that we presently use. And we got a phased approach. The phased approach starts out this year at $29,500. Next year would be $30,000. The year after would be $41,800. The valuations would be put on the property on the very last year. What they would be doing would be gathering all of the information that would be pertinent, the dimensions, interior of the structure, the exterior dimensions, upgrades, and so on. The first year, they would be going around identifying and verifying all land sales, review all real-to-data for land sales and asking prices, inspect each land parcel to determine all factors contributing to their sale, rebuild all land cost tables by zone and neighborhood, review final results, send out value notices, hold informational hearings and reviews, and finalize land update.
Further discussion on Article Four. Mr. Bowen? Please identify yourself, Ralph.
Ralph Bohm, 6 Gibson Drive. Just like Mrs. Spencer got up and voted, I mean, talked against the article the Budget Committee voted for. All votes on the Budget Committee are not unanimous. I, and I don't know who else, but voted against this one. We're spending enough money this year. This is not going to increase revenue to the town. I was involved with the last assessment that was done some 10 years ago. And it comes out, now even if it's all done, the town doesn't get any more money. It's one-third may pay more, one-third pay less, and one-third stays the same. The tax rate isn't going to change. The assessment rate will change, but the total number of taxes isn't going to change. So, this is something that can clearly wait till next year or another year. We don't need to be spending more money this year.
Please use the mic. Geez, you've never been hesitant. Geez, you've never been hesitant to use the mic before.
Excuse me, I apologize for the disorder. Discussion on that was closed. We're in the middle of a vote. To speak to that amendment and that article now, I feel, is inappropriate.
There's... Excuse me.
He's talking about Warren article that we just voted on in this...
No, you're not. He was talking about Article Four.
I apologize. I misunderstood.
We are debating Article Four.
I apologize.
Has everybody voted on Article Two? Who wishes using ballot number 15? Yes. Mrs. Pettit.
Rhaina Pettit, 132 Page Road. I have a question, and then I have a comment. My question is, when the presentation was made on supporting this article, one of the reasons was that the public has been coming to the Board of Selectmen requesting abatements. Could you explain why the abatements are being requested, and what's the impact of having granted them on the rest of us?
Would you repeat the last part of your question, Rhaina?
When people are coming to you requesting an abatement, what's the reason for requesting the abatement?
The number-one reason is the ratio. Right now, we're at 132 percent. The way I try to clarify it for people, if you move into Lynchfield today and you buy a $100,000 house, if you can find one, we're going to assess it $132,000 because of the ratio that is. And people just can't quite comprehend that.
Okay, so basically, because some people can't comprehend how the town is assessed, we're going to be spending $131,300. My problem with that is back many years ago, maybe less than 10 years ago, I was on the Towns Reassessment Committee. We had a study committee. We looked at the town's property. We went around to various properties throughout the town, and we found many people were paying for pools and driveways and sheds that no longer existed. People were not paying for driveways and additions that they clearly had enjoyed for many years and not contributed to the town's tax base. We found great disparity, and as a result of that reassessment, one-third of the town's property taxpayers saw their property tax bills drop, some by as much as $1,500, $1,800. A third of the people saw their taxes increase, and about a third saw their taxes remain the same. Now, I could see if we're correcting a disparity, I would support this. But if there's no wide disparity in town, if there hasn't been an analysis done to see whether there's a disparity, I would strongly oppose spending the money just to ease a few
Further discussion on Article Four. Yes, Mr. Farren.
Don Farren, 301 Charles Bancroft. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that properties are supposed to be appraised on a 10-year cycle. Is that correct? Once every 10 years a property, according to state law, right?
No, there is no... It's a guideline, but it's not a law.
And who decides what year we'll say my property's going to be appraised in? If you do it on a four-year basis, there'd be a big difference between, we'll say, next year's assessment and three years down the road. Let me explain. We are not... We're not taking this section of town and evaluating it, and then next year doing that. We're doing different phases of evaluation. The first phase is to look at the zoning and see if everything is being properly taxed in a zone. On the first phase, they'll also pick up any improvements that have been made and have never been put on the books for one reason or another. Then they will go into a more detailed assessment, and it takes three years. But everybody is going to be assessed on the same thing in the same year. It's not so that, you know, like today, it's low, tomorrow it's high. Everybody will be assessed on the same level. The answer to my first question is no, it isn't on a 10-year cycle in the state of New Hampshire? That's right. It is not. Lynchfield must be different than the rest.
Hi, Doug Rogers, Chemo Circle in Lynchfield. I'd just like to say, you know, I really enjoy living in this town. I've been here about six years now. Heaven forbid if I ever had to move out of this great town, relocation or whatever. I'd just be afraid if the assessments go in line, our tax rate, just on the record, are going to go up from, what'd you say, 27 right now to about 37. That might make it hard for me to sell my house if I ever had to. On those monthly reports they put in the Telegraph saying how everybody's in line, we don't look that bad right now because we're over-assessed. If they bring the values down, you're still going to pay $5,000, $3,000, $4,000, $6,000. But as far as you look, as far as the market value of selling your house, it no longer looks as attractive as it used to, because you're now in the elite high rate. Thank you.
Ray Peoples, 205...
Understand that when you're paying your taxes, the way that it happens is the town determines through the budgets how much money we need to function on during a year, and then you vote on whatever you're going to spend or what you're not going to spend. The DRA, the Department of Revenue Administration, is the one that says, okay, this is what you're going to pay. Now, if it takes this year $1,009,000 to do the work that we're going to do in the town, your fair share is going to be whatever your evaluation on your house is, but you're not going to pay a ratio that's different from what you're paying now. You're going to pay the same ratio. And one of the things that Tom was trying to explain is, you know, we have... Cecile in her office has many people come in, and it's not just they don't understand, but they have valid questions. And people, you know, I hate to open a Pandora's Box, but you can come in and say, hey, I'd like a reevaluation. And we have to do that. We'll turn it over, and you're going to pay piecemeal, or you're going to pay to get it all put together, and then we'll go from there.
Mr. Peoples.
Ray Peoples, 205 Charles Bancroft. Am I to understand this precisely? We're going to reevaluate the town to make this a level playing field for everyone in town. The people that are paying too little will pay the right amount, and the people that are paying too much will pay the right amount, and the people that were paying the right amount to begin with will still pay the right amount. Knowing that there's several people in town that are severely undertaxed, and there's several people in town that are severely overtaxed, I suggest we move ahead with this reevaluation. Thank you.
Further discussion on Article Four. Hearing none, I presume you're ready for a vote. All those in favor of Article Four to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $29,500 for Phase One of a four-year townwide assessment update plan. The entire cost of the assessment update over the four-year phasing will be $131,300. This is recommended by both the selectmen and the budget committee. All those in favor of Article Four is red, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, no? Article Four is defeated. I have a call for division, which doesn't mean necessarily a secret ballot. All those in favor, please raise your hand and keep your hand up, and I would ask my collectors to count each side for me, please. All those in favor, please hold your hand and keep it up, please. Yes, this is the same motion.
...for the first 12 months. If we wait until next year's town meeting, which we can if you want to, just understand we'll have to go out to bid, we'll have to award contract, we'll have to do cabling and installation, we'll have to have the software redone. So if we wait until next March town meeting, it will probably be October or so of 1998 before we can start the program. Anyway, the annual cost of $3,000 includes approximately $600 to keep our records updated with the Department of Motor Vehicles, because this is going to have to be done every month of every year. And there's approximately $700 for the computerized versions of all those books we have lined up on the windowsill, so this is at least going to be partially offset by savings and another line item. The only hardware that's included in this proposal is a network card and some cabling, which are a real bargain, and two printers. And the reason I say the network card and the cabling are a bargain is because there is in the office right now a computer provided by the state of New Hampshire, owned by the state of New Hampshire, maintained by the state of New Hampshire, which is usable only for vital records. Those of you who've done marriage licenses have seen me working on that computer. That's essentially all we can do on it right now, because it is not networked. But for the cost of a $130 network card and about $250 in cable and labor, we will essentially have a free computer that will be maintained by the state. We already own the two computer workstations, you've seen those in the office, but they do not have the printers we need to do this work. The printers would be a little over $400 each. The registration forms will feed directly into them, and they'll have a park feature so that we can use them for dog licenses and motor vehicle titles and all that sort of thing. Adding in an estimated $2,200 a year for postage and envelopes to do motor vehicle mailings, and a couple of hundred dollars for the computer paper, that brings us up to the $15 cost of the proposal.
This time, I'm speaking for the Budget Committee. Ralph Bohm, 6 Gibson Drive. We voted no on this. Basically, the main reason was that this is not going to be put into the existing town hall. It will go into the new town hall, which means it's probably not going to get installed until this fall or early winter, so it's not going to be used. So this is something clearly that could wait next year. Also, the continuing consideration, how much this is going to cost us in future years. Thank you.
On Article Five. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Ray LaBelle, Matta Crickout. Computers are a great thing. You just got a town hall, you're going to automate it, so you don't need so much more space. You just got the space. Why don't we just wire the building for it and put it in in a couple of years? It's not for the new town hall?
If Article One had been defeated, I was going to withdraw this because equipment in the present town hall. The reason I never proposed it before this year is because there's no room for it in the town hall. So only with the new town hall can we do this.
Okay, but you just got a new town hall. You just spent a half a million dollars. Can we just wire the building and put it in later?
Certainly, yes.
I mean, cables don't cost anything. I mean...
There's no pressure for this. People have asked to have it, and I'm offering it, and if you want to vote it down, I'm not going to feel bad.
No, I'm not... I think you need it. I think it's a service to the city, but put the cables and do it later. I mean, it's not going to be done for a while.
Yes, sir.
My quick question. Tom Evans, Fordan Berry Circle. Can we see a proposed reduction in staffing or some other cost reduction, tangible benefit from this added service? Because usually, computer automation would lead you to believe that we could have some reduction in staff.
This question was asked of Diane when it was presented, and the answer was there are no savings associated, a new cost, which will continue.
Tim Wade, 123 Page Road. It just doesn't seem worthwhile to continue to maintain an inadequate record-keeping system in this... We're talking about technology that's 15 years old, that other towns have been doing this way, and because we haven't had the space... Most of us deal with the town hall through getting their licenses and getting their registrations done. It's one of the few things that we go to the town hall for unless we have to put an addition on our house or what have you. And I think for the people of Lynchfield, it's worthwhile including updating the record-keeping system current age that we have. Thank you.
Anybody else to speak to the article? Hearing no other discussion. Hearing no other discussion. I'll take the vote on Article Five to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum $15,220 to purchase computer equipment. Said equipment will allow for the processing and motor vehicle registrations by mail, and will also automate other functions. Recommended by the selectmen, not recommended by the Budget Committee. All those in favor of Article Five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, no?
No.
The ayes have it. Article Five is passed. The town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $20,000 to upgrade Brickyard Drive soccer field, and to authorize the withdrawal of $42 accrued interest from the Cummings Farm Recreational Offset Fund, and to further authorize the use of $5,958 impact fees. Work to include tree removal, installation of a sprinkler system, grading and seeding of field, and such other improvements as may be needed. This is a non-lapsing account per RSA 32 colon 3, Roman numeral 6, and will not lapse until the work is completed, or in two years, whichever is less. Selectmen and the Budget Committee. I have a motion to withdraw. The motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion to withdraw? Discussion on the motion to withdraw? Yeah.
After council with the Recreation Committee, it was decided that they were... This particular project at this time, they have to do a much more in-depth study before they can actually get solid numbers available. At the time this was prepared, we felt that they were ready, but they actually were not prepared. We met with them Monday night, and they requested that we withdraw the article.
Further discussion on the motion to withdraw? Hearing none. All those in favor of withdrawing Article Six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Article Six is withdrawn. Moving right along. Article Seven. Will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $5,000 for the purpose of a perimeter survey and placing permanent bounds on the boundaries and turning points of the 28-plus-or-minus acre zone known as Moore's Falls Conservation Area. Also to purchase a sign for said-mentioned property. By the selectmen and the Budget Committee, I recognize Joan McGivern for a motion. Do I have a second to the motion? Joan to speak to the motion.
This is to put in bounds of the town. Bounds of the town owns the bounds, and we have gone out and gotten bids to place the bounds, have the 28 acres surveyed, and put permanent bounds in. If there's any excess money, we would like to purchase a sign for the area.
Further discussion on Article Seven. Hearing none, I presume you're ready for a vote. All those in favor of Article Seven to see whether the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $5,000 for the... the sum of $5,000 for the purpose of a perimeter survey and pla, blah, 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 recommended by Selectmen and Budget Committee, Selectmen and Budget Committee. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, no.
No.
The ayes have it, the motion is passed. Please raise your hand. Those, thank you. Those opposed? I think I need a count. Those in favor, please raise your hand and my counters, please. Somebody lose a counter over here? Those opposed to Article Seven, please raise your hand. Voting yes, eighty-six, no, eighty-six, no, seventy-eight, the article is passed. Hearing eight is still working well. Article Eight. By the way, one little item of history that the, bit that was given you earlier about when, than you earlier about when the town hall was originally built. I served on the committee that moved the town hall from about seventy-five feet from where it is now. It had previously been moved from a, been moved from a location that is now part of the Merrimack River. Article Eight, see if the town will vote to raise $1,000 for deposit into the, for deposit into the Conservation Land Acquisition Fund. Said funds may be used to purchase land, conservation or trail easements, or purchase of development rights by petition, recommended by the Selectmen and the Budget Committee. I recognize Frank Byron for a motion. So move, do I have a second? Speak to the motion.
Thank you for coming out this evening, ladies and gentlemen. I wish to speak in favor of this warrant article. We are a field conservation committee and, and one of the things that I wish to go over a couple of minutes with you is what we're chartered to do. We basically are responsible for cataloging all sensitive wetlands in the town of Litchfield and making sure that they are protected. We are assigned to assess the potential impact of construction plans and on the environment and act in an advisory capacity to such committees by the Selectmen. We are chartered with, we are chartered with educating the public in terms of what the environment of Litchfield contains, who's relating to the environment, and we're also chartered with, and we're also chartered with trying to help protect and preserve Litchfield's environment. Recently, we have been involved in such discussions with building contractors to protect areas of sensitive environmental, environmental concern, areas such as the grassy pond building proposal that would have lots go in place. We all, we also have at this time involved in other construction projects that are going to impact on wetlands and things. We are looking to try and put $5,000 into, that will allow us to set aside land and try and set aside land and try and protect those areas that we think are in the best interests of the town to protect. We have been involved and have most recently used that rainy day fund, preserved for you folks, such areas as the Moore's Falls, Moore's Falls area, which is now open and gives you access down to the Merrimack River. We spent approximately, out of that rainy day fund with matching funds from the state, matching funds from the state to try and protect that system. Currently, our fund is now down to $13,000. We are facing costs on a per acre basis of approximately $30,000 that counter. We're asking you to take and consider this five, to take and consider this $5,000. It will add 1.5 cents per thousand to your tax bill and we ask for your support. Thank you.
Hearing none, I presume you're ready for a vote. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $5,000 deposit into the Conservation Land Acquisition Fund, and Acquisition Fund. Said funds to be used to purchase land, conservation or trail easements or, by petition, recommended by the Selectmen and the Budget, by the Selectmen and the Budget Committee. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you, those opposed, thank you, those opposed, please raise your hand. I think the ayes have it. Article Nine, to see if the town, Article Nine, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $49,500 to purchase and install a handicap lift at the Aaron Cutler Memorial Library by petition, not recommended by the Selectmen or the Budget Committee. I recognize Pam Boitzellis.
Motion to withdraw it at this time?
I have a motion to withdraw, I have a motion to withdraw Article Nine, do I have a second to the motion to withdraw? Don't go away, Pam. I have a second. Pam, speak to the motion to withdraw.
We are very disappointed that we had to withdraw this this year, but up until a couple of months ago, we had concrete plans, what we would like to do, and as we put it out to bid, this elevator was discontinued just recently. So we hope we have your support. The trustees will be presenting this, these will be presenting this next year and every year until we do get support from the town. It's our legal responsibility.
Further discussion on the motion to, discussion on the motion to withdraw? Hearing none, I presume you're ready for a vote to withdraw. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article Nine is withdrawn. Article Ten. See if the town will vote to hire a children's librarian at the Aaron Cutler, July 1, 1997, upon completion, upon completion of the renovation of the library's lower level into a children's room and to raise and appropriate the sum of $4,000 for salary and related costs for the period of, cost for the period of July 1, 1997 to December 31, 1997 by petition, not recommended by the Selectmen, recommended by the Budget Committee. I recognize Pam Boitzellis for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to hire a children's librarian.
Second to the motion? Motion made and seconded. Pam, motion made and seconded. Pam, speak to the motion. Pam, why don't you come forward?
I've just completed my first year on a three-year term as a library trustee, and one of the things that led me to run was, when you look over the trustees' reports for the last ten years, what you'll find is a lot of the goals have, and for whatever reason, whether it was lack of manpower, lack of manpower, perhaps the economic climate, these things just were not fulfilled. And it's been our goal in the past year, since we have two more trustees, to try to get these goals accomplished. And one of the things that we've been trying to do is have a children's room for several years now. And last year, a plan was brought forth to try to have an architect develop a plan, and it was voted down, and I think people felt we were somehow ill-prepared in some way. We realized there's a lot to count right now, and what we are trying to do is use the money that, do is use the money that we have in trust funds as well as we were able to get impact fees to offset the costs of it. And we, in the next few months, and we're asking for your support to hire, support to hire a children's librarian. I'd like to have Claudia Danielson, our current librarian, tell you a little bit about what we hope to have as our new lib-
The town of Litchfield has a high percentage of children, seventeen years and under. For example, the 1990 census reported a total population of 5,516. 1,835 of these citizens were children. The Aaron Cutler Memorial Library plays an important part in the lives of our young people. Many new mothers take their first outings and many toddlers first learn to share, toddlers first learn to share while playing in our toy box. Story Hour with its group activities provides socialization skills for preschoolers. Our collection provides both recreational reading and educational support for students since school libraries and regular school hours. Circulation figures, circulation figures which are consistently higher for juvenile materials further attest to the importance of our children's-
Children who learn to appreciate the library and its services, library and its services become lifelong supporters, sometimes even library trustees. Voted to expend trust funds to renovate the downstairs meeting, renovate the downstairs meeting room into a children's room. This will enable us to house juvenile materials separately and provide a special place for our young people. As director of our community's library to determine staff needs. In order to provide, in order to provide continued good service and hopefully expand programming, we are seeking a children's librarian or specialist. Currently, the position would entail fifteen hours of work per week. These are the hours when only one staff person is- We are seeking a trained librarian, preferably with a man, preferably with a master's degree to perform these double duties. This person would handle children's programming and help with our entrance into the world of technology. Libraries today should be linked to the state and internet. Ours is not. Technology, technology is a tool that can vastly improve our services. Having a person trained in computer applications would be cost efficient. Having a professional would also improve our community, making attempts at new programs such as evening or weeks, such as evening or weekend storytimes feasible. The director would be free to concentrate on adult services and improvements in that area. Would agree with us that hiring a children's librarian, hiring a children's librarian is not only necessary, but will actually benefit the future of our library. Thank you.
Further discussion on Article Ten?
My name is Mark Chavino, Five Laurel Street. I just have a question. Wouldn't parents be, participate in this process?
Could you, could you repeat that, please? I'm not quite sure I heard exactly what you said.
Well, if this is for children, I assume they're not going to walk to the library, they're going to get driven there. Normally, don't you, when you bring little kids, do parents participate or would we just drop markers?
Oh, no, this would not be a drop-off situation. The children's room would just be extending room for the collection in the library. Right now, I'm not through our, how familiar you are with the collection we have, but it's, the collection we have, but it's extremely crowded and there's, I mean, there's books upon books with the children's area. Downstairs would just be all the children's books, children's tapes, the play Story Hour would take place, things like that. Parents would still be with their children. It's not a drop-off center in any way for children, families to use that together. Upstairs would be for the adults, this would be for the adults and the adult books and all of that collection and everything from tapes and everything else.
So you'd need a part-time person to organize the, that's what you're asking?
Further discussion on Article Ten?
My name is Dick Rafferty, number three, also the current president of the Friends of the, of the Friends of the Aaron Cutler Library. I'd like to praise the trustees for their efforts and getting this room finished and making it fun to the town. I'm a father, I'm a father of two children. Both my children have attended functions at the library and continue to do so weekly and they've enjoyed it very much, enjoyed it very much. Right now, in the present state of that room, it's not being able to be used until this work is completed. I think it'd be a shame for very short money not to utilize that room to its fullest extent. And on behalf of a group of people that are trying to raise awareness of the services that the library currently offers and can, would ask the townspeople to vote for this, people to vote for this article. Thank you.
Further discussions?
Marty Croco, Pinecrest Road. The library quite often, and my kids have, and my kids have used the services and I agree, it's definitely needed. My question is regarding the $4100-plus dollars to hire a person with a master's degree. I just ran the numbers on my calculator, week times fifty-two weeks, that comes out weeks, that comes out the, am I miss?
This is for half, this is six months?
So that comes out, well, I can double my figures, that comes out the $10 an hour. Do you really think you can get a librarian with a master's degree? My mother-in-law was a librarian in the town of Northfield. She worked for $5 an hour, it was a volunteer. Actually, I don't think that's realistic, realistic. Is it more feasible to plan for the future to have a, a person that would come in and take it on as a job and help her to fill the need at that realist, at that realistic salary cost? It's just a question that maybe you can, maybe you already discussed it among the trustees or whatever, but it'd be cheap to get somebody to fill that position, position.
This figure for the salary with scale, it's not something, you know, we just came up with in a fluke, came up with in a fluke. And from speaking to other people that are in graduate school and places like that concerning library science, it's not unreasonable to expect someone on a part-time basis to get their start doing something like this. I know probably to a lot of you that sounds like peanuts, but there may even be a lot of people out there looking for part-time work and you may be surprised. It might seem to have someone just come in and fill in and fill the needs, fill in and fill the needs, but we need someone with experience, we need someone who has computer experience particularly to get us going into the future. And it's easy, you could hire as they could fulfill the need, but we really need someone qualified down there, someone qualified down there to keep the library going in the right direction.
Marilyn Wade Page wrote, I'm the current board of trustees and I would also, trustees and I would also like to commend Mr. Rafferty and the friends at the library for their excellent work in trying to bring that we have up to, we're up to where it needs to be to service a town of 6,000 people. It's really not a lot of money to spend and it's really needed for the kids in this town and for the size of this town as it is now and is in-
Chair.
I agree that the roughly, however, my wife is a librarian with an MLS. She applied, she applied for a similar position to this in the town of Hudson at similar pay scale and there were plenty of people applying for that job.
Further discussion on Article Ten? Hearing none, I presume you're ready for a vote. See if the town will vote to hire a children's librarian at the Aaron Cutler Memorial Library effective July 1, 1997, upon completion of the renovation of the library's lower level into a children's room and to raise and appropriate the sum of $41,150 in related costs for the period of July 1, period of July 1, 1997 to December 31, 1997 by petition, not recommended by the Selectmen and- $4,155, thank you. All those in favor, is the article as properly read? Saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Those opposed, no. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the article's passed. I can make one other little announcement before we lose any other people, before we lose any other people. Now that you've voted, the new town hall is going to further confuse you because vote, because voting, election day will be moved to the town hall, and we won't have to disrupt either of the schools. Article eleven, Article eleven. Shall we modify the elderly exemptions from property tax in the town based on assessed value for qualified taxpayers, qualified taxpayers to be as follows. For a person sixty-five years of age and up to seventy-five years, ten person seventy-five years of age up to eighty years, age up to eighty years, fifteen thousand dollars. For a person eighty years of age or older, twenty, to qualify the person, person must have been a, person must have been a New Hampshire resident for at least five years, own the real estate individually or jointly, or if the real estate is owned by such person's spouse, they must have been married for- In addition, the taxpayer must have a net income of, must have a net income of not more than sixteen thousand four hundred dollars, or if married, a combined net income of less than twenty thousand four hundred dollars, and own net assets not excess of thirty-five thousand dollars of the person's residence. We will vote by, we will vote by ballot, one of the two ballots you were given tonight. Article eleven. I would recognize Pat Jewitt for a motion, Jewitt for a motion. Do I have a second? Second, it's Pat to speak to the motion.
Okay. Uh, according to this, if it's a resident, could have a net income of not more, net income of not more than sixteen thousand four hundred dollars, I hate to live on that, combined net income of not more than twenty thou, more than twenty thousand four hundred dollars, and then own assets not more than thirty-five thousand dollars excluding the value of their home. Currently, a person or a couple can have thirty thousand. So actually, we're raising about, actually, we're raising about four thousand dollars more a couple can raise, have a year, plus owes more in assets, which is not a lot of money, which is not a lot of money. I think if any of us had to live on that, we'd have a pretty hard time doing it. And we do have a few people in town, small raise, and I hope that people approve it. Thank you. People approve it. Thank you.
Do I have further discussion on Article eleven? Hearing none, I presume you're ready for a vote. Please tear off the top half, which is marked Article eleven. Mark it yes or no. Collectors, please pass the box, the box. While they are doing that, I think we can move on to that. I think we can move on to Article twelve. We can keep quiet, uh, the noise down, we'll move on to Article twelve, on to Article twelve. Shall we adopt the provisions of RSA seventy-nine dash eight colon twenty-five dash small F for revenues received from the land use change tax, end use change tax in a fund separate from the general fund? Any surplus remaining in the land use change tax fund shall not be part of the general fund until such time as the, shall have had the opportunity at an annual meeting, at an annual meeting, to, to vote to appropriate a specific amount from the land use change tax fund prohibited by the laws or by the, or by the constitution of this state. After an annual meeting, any unappropriated balance of the land use change tax revenue fiscal year shall be recognized as general fundized, as general fund revenue for the current fiscal year. We will vote by, by, uh, selectman Pinciero for a motion. Do I have a second? Motion made in second. Jack to speak to the most.
This is really a no-cost item. It just shows, gives us an opportunity for that money. And instead of coming into the general fund, it will actually, the general fund, it will actually go into a fund where in the pre, in the next year, you'll be able to stipulate where you want to put that money. It, it's not get money. It, it's not going to be just spent, gone into the general fund and not know where it goes. You'll be able to appropriate that money to a-
Just, just a question. I had fought for it some years ago, and I thought we had already voted on, thought we had already voted on it. Is this something that, some years ago, five years ago or so? Is this something that's going to have to be put on the ballot every year? Because we had already voted this. But, but anyway, vote for it.
Further discussion on Article twelve. Any further discussion? Hearing, hearing none. Don't sit down, guys. We're ready to collect again. Please mark Article twelve, the elect. See if the town will vote to adopt the provisions of our, adopt the provisions of RSA two-oh-two dash A colon four dash small D. Authorizing the library trustees to accept gifts of, of money which may be offered to the library for, offered to the library for any public purpose, provided, however, that no acceptance of personal, personal property by the library trustees shall be deemed to bind the town or the library trustees to raise, appropriate, or expend any public funds for the operation, maintenance, repair, or replacement of such personal property. This authorization shall remain in effect until resent, rescinded by a vote. I recognize, uh, Stephen Calawatt for motion, Stephen Calawatt for motion. Yes. I understand it took Steve eight hours to get from New York to here. Appreciate your efforts.
This is simply a house-
Stephen Calawatt, one sixty-eight, Charles Bancroft, Highway. Bancroft, Highway.
Steve, just make the motion at this point. Let me get a second.
I'm sorry, did you-
Move or red.
I moved that we, I haven't got my town report, I haven't got my town report.
Do I have a second? I have a second. Now you're on, Steve.
All right. Stephen Calawatt, one sixty-eight, Charles Bancroft, Highway. Uh, this is simply a housecleaning article that the state has asked us to, uh, present to the town, and it will allow us to accept gifts other than money. Done this in the past, the land that the library sits on was a gift, library sits on was a gift to the town.
Any other discussion on the article? And I presume you're ready for a vote. All those in favor of, all those in favor of Article thirteen is red. Please signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. Okay. Article fourteen. To raise such sums of money as may be necessary to refrain town charges for the ensuing year and to make appropriations of the same as set forth posted herewith, and to consider each item in whole or in part. This is the main budget as found on pages eleven through fifteen. I will recognize the chair of the budget committee, chair of the budget committee for a motion indicating the total bottom line budget, not including any other monies previously approved this evening. This will be the main motion. View the budget. I will accept motions in writing, motions in writing, to amend the main motion dollar amount up or down with reference to a particular line item. I recognize, uh, Budget Committee Chairman Spencer for a motion.
Now, recognize that I spoke against Article Two, it passed. Uh, I'm not going to move the main budget. Okay. I move that the Assembly approve a bottom line budget amount exclusive of warrant articles of one million nine hundred and seventy-two, nine hundred and seventy-two thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars to defray town charges for the ensuing year and make appropriations of the same.
Motion made and seconded. Somebody walked off with my town report. Right, the main, right, the main motion is for one million nine hundred and seventy-two thousand seven, the budget is on pages eleven through, on pages eleven through fifteen. Mr. LaSalle, if you wish to speak to the motion.
Yes. I move to amend light item zero-zero-one dash dash seven-four-zero, which is fire department new equipment, three thousand eight hundred and ninety-three dollars, ninety-three dollars, which results in a new bottom line, two million thirty-seven thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Two million, two million thirty-seven thousand, what are the last three?
Seven, eight, eight.
Seven, eight, eight. Eight, eight. And what was the amount of the increase?
Uh, the amount of the increase is, uh, sixty-five thousand dollars.
And so that's changing that line item to what? Ninety-three what? That line is going to ninety-three what? Please.
I don't have the arithmetic on that, Phil.
No, you just gave me a number off your piece of paper.
Okay.
Ninety-three thousand.
I, I have ninety-three thousand eight hundred, but I'm not sure of my arithmetic on that.
Okay. Okay.
Line item fifty dash zero-zero-one seven-four-zero, which is fire department new equipment.
Do I have a second to the amendment? Motion seconded. Wish to speak to the amendment, Mr. LaSalle, to the amendment, Mr. LaSalle.
Yes, at the current, at the, is construction going along Route three A, uh, Route three A, down Pinecrest Road, and, uh, along three A in front of the Griffin Memorial School in ends, is a water line, water line. The water line would be, uh, that would run McElwain Drive, which is at the end of the, at the end of the middle, middle school drive here, down Pinecrest, and then north and south on Route three A, on Route three A, uh, south on Route three A just across Pinecrest, the new Pinecrest, and north on three A approximately to the Griffin Memorial School. It was included in the plans, but there was no funding for it. The, the purpose of this, and why it's in this line item, is at the present time, the, the main reason for, is to have a fire hydrant in front of Griffin, hydrant in front of Griffin Memorial School. The secondary reason is that we do have water problems at Griffin, and at the present time, there's wa, we have an artesian well, but we never know, but we never know when that well's going to give out on us. If line is not put in during this new, during this new construction, it would not be able to be put in, it's my understanding, for ten years. There's some sort of an ICET ruling about tearing up federal cons, it's been estimated that if we waited, estimated that if we waited, it would cost approximately two hundred thousand dollars to put this water line in. So the idea here is to run the line, the, uh, while they're doing the, while they're doing the construction, and, uh, so that we, it's, number one, to give us some fire protection at Griffin Memorial, and number two, to provide an alternate source of water in the future. The school board has not determined when they would hook up to the water line. There's, there's discussion with respect to the cost of water and so forth. We're not required to hook up to the, to the line immediately. The, um, when we, when we do hook up, we will hook up, we will get approximately a ten thousand dollar rebate on this sixty-five thousand dollars from the water company. The other thing is, if developments, uh, that are in the area, who, who knows when and where, but if anybody else hooks into the water line that, that we have run, then we would get additional funds. So the idea is while they're building, while they're building the road to put the water line in.
Further discussion on the amendment?
Just one question, Rich. Is there an annual cost associated with this?
There's an annual cost for manual cost for maintenance of the, the fire hydrant. It's, it, it's approximately six hundred to seven hundred dollars. I don't know the exact cost.
Further discussion?
Al Rochio, sixteen Birch Street. We're hearing a lot of ifs, maybes, mightbe's, don't know if the school's going to hook up to it or not, annual increase in operational costs, future building on god knows what, to coin the phrase, what, to coin the phrase. Uh, I really don't have a clear understanding of this and, and why it was, uh, not presented earlier. Thank you.
Mr. LaSalle?
The reason this item was brought up is because when, when we were going over the con, it was brought to our attention by the road agent, that, by the road agent, that this was in the contract. However, there were no fundings for it. Now, it wasn't paid for, but it was drawn up so that the con, drawn up so that the contractor could do this. The reason that we have accepted to do it as a town instead of the school doing it, first of all, it came so late that the school couldn't get it in. The next thing is, we felt that the fire protection down at the school, the dollar bills. Now, now, as far as the Board of Selectmen is concerned, we didn't do it in anticipation of anybody else hooking up to it. We just looked at it as a good investment, a fire down at Griffin Memorial School, Memorial School.
Do I have a follow?
Is this a cap, what I'm being led to understand, that it's, uh, that it's, uh, some, some form of, uh, uh, protection for the school as a capital investment?
It's put under a line item as a firefighting equipment.
Other question? Discussion?
Dave Manopoulos, Paige wrote. It's anywhere around, uh, Griffin School, anywhere, uh, Griffin School, anywhere. And not only would it help with the Griffin School, but it would help for the whole area right there. There's, there's not one agent on Route three A, so you, you know, you're getting a lot out of that broad views. That's it, so not only the school, you get protection, you get, for any tanker shuttle, you got to do on Route three A, so, Route three A, so it's a good thing.
Further discussion?
Yes, Michael Stanhope, Button Bush Lane, speaking as a taxpayer and also one of your permanent firefighters. For this motion, I feel if you're building the road, now's it's building the road, now's the time to put the water line in. If you ever want to dig it up, you've seen the roads get dug up, and you put these lines in, it causes further havoc, more expense. Now's the time to do it. It's a minimal cost. If you ever want to build an addition onto this school, I mean, to Griffin Memorial School, you have to sprinkler it. They're going to start to require you to sprinkler it, and you're going to sprinkler it, and you're going to have to put the water main into the school. it, and you're going to have to put the water main into the school. I just feel that now would be the wise decision to put it in there.
Agree with the motion. Of all the money we spent tonight, money we spent tonight, this is probably one of the most worthy things. Now, protect the school and all, pour water and hydrant in the area, because there isn't
The amendment. Hearing none, will vote on the amendment to add sixty-five thousand dollars, bringing the total budget to two million seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars, the sixty-five thousand, the sixty-five thousand dollars being used for putting in a water line and access it down by Griffin Memorial School. All those in favor of the amendment, aye. Opposed, no. Opposed, no. Ayes have it, the amendment carries. Before we go on, Article 11 passed, 159 to 16. Article 12 passed, 112 to 32. Our main motion is two million three hundred and, thirty-seven thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Further discussion, eighty-eight dollars. Further discussion? Yes, Jack?
I'd like to move to two million thirty-seven thousand. Call the question.
Calling the question. All those in question. All those in favor of ending debate on the budget, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Aye.
Ayes have it, the debate is ended. All, to raise and appropriate the sum of two million, of two million thirty-seven thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it, motion is passed. Article 15, to hear reports of agents, committees, and others, officers therefore chosen, and to transact any other business that may be legally come before this meeting, including the reading minutes of the, of the current or prior meetings. I will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of minutes and refer to you the reports as printed in the town report, town report. If I have a motion, so move, second, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
All those in favor, please say aye. No. Congratulations, you brave folk, congratulations, you brave folks coming out tonight and sitting through it. You did a good job. Phil? Thank you very much. You did a good job. Good luck.